If you all want to have a seat with your parents, you're welcome to stay or if you want to go. Yes, thank you all so much. You all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Do you want to turn around and get a picture?
Get your picture taken.
Thank you all. Okay, so we are going to get started. So we'll first have roll call. So soon to be mayor pro Tim Mark. In case we can't see, but kind of formalize everything. Alderman Monte Allison. Alderman Quinn Ray. Alder. Present. And Alderman Randy Orwigs. Great. So everyone is here. And there is a change to the agenda tonight that is not listed online or in our agenda packet. So we do have Chief Blackwater here to share some promotions among our valued police department. And we are going to add that to the agenda under old business if there's no objections. Okay, so moving on, I'm so the items on the consent agenda as we discussed last week. Do you want to share those?
Sure. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have the November 1st, 2021 minutes, November 9th meeting minutes. Certification from the board of the recent election results. We have those totals from the county. The 2022 board meeting schedule, which is through March at this point. I know there's going to be some discussions about what what the rest of the year will look like. So we've just done it through March. Item D is the 2022 municipal retention schedule. Those are the rules the state has established on when documents can be destroyed or disposed of. And item E is a list of appointments to various committees and boards within the town that the mayor is making for all of you. That's the consent agenda this evening.
And before I ask for a motion, I'll just point everyone's attention to the board appointments also included the dates for which each of us are assigned to attend the planning board. If there are any issues with that, which you know, somebody can just agree to that. And do I hear a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous yes. Okay, a very important part of our agenda tonight is the oath. And I guess it's not really swearing in, just your oath of Mark Green, who will be taking on the role of our mayor pro temp with Davis Montgomery retiring from his role on the board. So we will do that now.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do. Sorry, I don't know. Everything goes on Instagram. Okay, I, Mark Green.
I'm Mark Green.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowmely swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state.
The Constitution of the state.
Of North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Mark Green.
I'm Mark Green.
Do further swear.
Swear.
That I will execute the duties.
That I will execute the duties.
Of mayor pro temp.
Of mayor pro temp.
For the town of Elon, North Carolina.
For the town of Elon, North Carolina.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability. According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, so moving on to public comments. This is an opportunity for any of our residents or visitors to share any wishes that they have for the town, any concerns that they have. If you would like to speak, we will ask that you make sure that you did sign in on the sheet at the beginning. And you will be given three minutes to share your comments. Are there any public comments this evening? Nothing online?
Nothing showing up.
Okay, we will close the public comment section and move on to old business. And letter A, which is the only letter, ARP budget account. So Mr. Reiner feel to share a little bit more information?
Sure. As a reminder, this past June, I believe it was, we adopted a budget amendment to accept the ARP American Recovery Plan Act funding for the federal government. We created a special revenue account to place that money into. And as the guidance has switched over the last six months or so, we realized that we need to have that into grant project account rather than a special revenue account. So we're asking the board to change the format of that account to a special grant account this evening.
Do I hear a motion to approve that item?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, second. Stephanie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So it carries unanimously. All right, moving on to presentations, we'll invite Chief Blackwater to share some good information with us.
First of all, we would thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity. I think it's vital. It not only introduces you to especially some of the newer Alderman to your employees, but also it lets you know who is in charge of building the confidence from the town from the one-on-one contacts that that are also. It gives you a little bit of perspective and behind the scenes look of who our officers are. And if you will indulge me, what I like to do is we have three officers that have recently been promoted. I'd like to call them up one at a time and just give you a little background and and thank their families for being here, if that is okay. So just a little bit about this particular promotion, it's a sergeant's promotion. It's a first line supervisor and I think it gets overlooked and it's a little understated because it is probably one of the most crucial roles in our agency. It is the the first line of defense. It's the first line of accountability. It's the first line of recognizing issues and getting training and giving kudos and and being that boost to morale for our officers. So it's it's an extremely important role and it's an extremely important process that we went through and the trust that is bestowed upon these officers. First in line, and I just kind of went alphabetical, is Chris Miles. Hold up, Sarge. For those that don't know Chris, he is, he came to us from Elon University. He has been in law enforcement, public safety since 2002. Most of that has been at higher education facilities as public safety. I think he rose to the ranks highest captain? Major. So coming to us, he came with a lot of experience and just to give you a little insight, he's only been with us since April. He's only been with us since April of this year. He had already built up a lot of contacts, a lot of respect, a lot of trust between our partnership with university. For those that also don't know, and I hope I'm not outing you here, but this is his, this was his goal, to work for the town of Elon. More so to have leadership at the town of Elon. Chris is outstanding in his in his tenure with us already, he stepped up and he is our co-chair for the entire county for the CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Training Committee Steering Committee. He helps design the crisis intervention training that officers across the state are taking. So he is a steering force in that. He's done several community outreach projects already. He established himself as an informal leader from get go. And again, with his experience, I have really high expectations, I'm sorry. But with with that comes the comes the responsibility and and it's a burden. But I know that you are up for the challenge and I'm extremely proud of Chris and want to thank his family for being here today. And congratulations. You want to, can we get one without masks?
Okay.
Next on the list is Ed Peters. If you don't know Ed, you're missing out. I don't know where you've been. It's been with us since 2012. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna embarrass him for one second. He is our oldest rookie we've ever hired. But through that B L T class, he won like the most physically fit, you know, of his class. He is right now, his tenure is he is, he is aside from command staff, he's our most veteran officer that we have on the force. He's been our detective for the last three years. He's, I can say this without being shy about it. He's the hardest working person at our agency and I throw myself in that. It's hard to beat his work ethic. He's a 20-year, 20-plus year resident of Elon. Prior to law enforcement, he was owner operator of a local business, Carolina Auto and Truck. And aside from that, he wears a lot of different hats. We're a small agency, so we have to get creative in how we outsource all the things that we have to do like a large agency. He's over our vehicle repair and maintenance, which keeps him busy. He is an administrator while our, like in our intelligence databases, he keeps all the officers passwords up to code and make sure everything's running smoothly there. In it, this is in addition to a CID duties. He's a taser instructor. We have to have that annually, make sure all the all the devices are working properly, make sure everything's running smoothly. He operates as the department's armor, making sure our guns and everything is working properly. They're in good working condition. He's an instructor. I don't know. But he's kind of a jack of all trades and when we have an issue, it's usually the first person we go to to see if he can help us fix it. So he is a tremendous asset to the agency. He just received his advanced certificate presented for that before. It takes a lot of training and huge experience to get that. We couldn't be happier. Ed is going to take over as the CID supervisor. So we'll have a new a new detective taking his spot and we'll be training that person as well. So I'm very proud of you. Thank you for all your hard work.
This one chief, he's also a mean guitar player.
You are, yes, okay, thank you. I should have had y'all write this. Thank you for that. We can get him to come in and play some Christmas stuff or.
No stairway, just saying.
Last but not not least, I'd like to call up Scott Swing. So Scott is is also a trailblazer here. He has been with us since December 2020. He came to us by way of Graham PD. Spent eight years and right as we were hiring him, he had been nominated, I think, or won 2019 Officer of the Year. Yeah, he was last in SRO at Graham Middle School. And and I'm going to tell you, like, for Officer of the Year, when you're competing with patrol officers, to get that award, I think, speaks volumes. I think again, SRO is something that, you know, people don't really give the kudos that they deserve, but to deal with middle school kids all day long. And I think that's prepared him for not only his experience in a larger agency, but that experience is really, he's found in a resource here. Scott's got his bachelor's degree from East Carolina, is that right? His advanced certificate as well. He's a general instructor. He just got that. That was one of his biggest goals coming over here. It was an opportunity he was trying to, or he really wanted to accomplish in Graham. He came over here and he was awarded that opportunity to be a department instructor. And he's just an all-around great fit with the police department. The town manager even gave him a glowing review on, you know, on an incident where he was talking, interacting with the community. And and he is just, to know him and to talk to him, he's very articulate. He is also a prick reader of all things written at the agency. Star Wars buff and fan, so we instantly connected. Just an asset grew and through and have to say in in, I haven't worked with him a lot, but in that promotional assessment, I was, I was really impressed with some of the things that I saw. So we have high expectations for all these folks that have been promoted. And I'm just, I'm pleased that we hired you. I'm pleased that you're part of the team and I'm very proud of you. Thank you all. And thank you for the families.
Okay, moving on to new business, a letter A, major development plan for conversion of parking to pedestrian walkway submitted by Elon University. And for that, we will have Pam.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Last week, we gave you a brief overview of this project, which is a rather simple conversion of portion of a parking lot on the campus to a pedestrian walkway. Tonight, we'd like for you to take a vote on approving this. And your approval would be contingent on final approval by our technical review committee, which we think will be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks.
Any questions for Pam?
You did a really good job last week, so.
Do I have a motion? Do you approve this major development plan? Make the motion. Do I have a second? Seconds. Oh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Letter B, consideration of COVID sick leave.
This is something we talked about last week. Knowing that we've just come through a period of quite a few positive cases within the department. And as we've seen around the county and around the state, numbers seem to be on the upswing again. The governor's briefing today, we are down to two committees that are in moderate transmission and all the other counties are higher significant transmission. So it is a huge growing issue again. And the session was whether we wanted to implement a local COVID sick leave policy, a provision of COVID sick leave talked about through the end of June, that would allow employees who do test positive and have to quarantine or those who are living with somebody who tests positive or, you know, someone gets vaccinated and has a reaction or is out of work for a day or two for that, that they would have sick leave separate from their annual sick leave that they earn a little bit every month. I had originally written it up, thinking in terms of 40 hours, the board talked about making it 80 hours. So the draft or the policy having your packet implements that at 80 hours. And in essence, it's the same policy that we adopted in January, that ran January through this past June. It would be retroactive to November 1st with the board's approval.
Any questions for Mr. Reiner?
I do have one just for clarification. On number four, that you're caring for an individual who has been advised to quarantine or isolate? I mean, what specifications does that mean? Does that mean a child or does that mean a spouse? Because just advised quarantine doesn't necessarily mean that they've. Am I being too overly?
Well, I, I mean, the intent is that there are, there will be employees who live with somebody who has to quarantine, whether they're ill, whether they've been exposed. Advised is, you know, you've gone to see your doctor, talk to your doctor and they say, all right, yeah, you, you're sick, go quarantine. Our employee is in the same household.
Same household. That's all I wanted to clarify. No, that's okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
But to that point, you know, I do think it's worth the department heads to have a conversation about this policy and the fact that, you know, if someone does have someone in their family who is just ice or quarantined, you know, they've been exposed, they're quarantined, that you know, they might want to consider that if they use all 80 hours when somebody else isn't even sick, that if they become sick, they won't have any time. So just to kind of reiterate that, because we at my office recently had the same issue where someone used all of their time and then they came down with COVID and they didn't have any time to use.
I've had the same thing happen in my district.
I think it's worth keeping in there, but also to just make sure that they understand that, that it's 80 hours. It's not 80 hours this time, 80 hours that time, 80 hours.
Not prevent.
I guess caring for the same thing as if you were, the spouse can, you have to quarantine for a required number of days. We show off the opportunity for those folks to work remotely if they can't, because caring doesn't necessarily mean you're waiting on someone, but work remotely as we have done.
Yes.
Past year and a half.
If somebody is working remotely, then that that's not COVID sick leave.
Quarantine. Doesn't eat until those 80 hours.
Correct.
I think just as a general comment, you know, we talked about different hours last time. I'm in full agreement with 80 hours. I think that's pretty consistent with what we're seeing with a lot of workplace now. And it does give us this, you know, this pandemic goes on and on stage to the next. And I think that does give us some flexibility. So I think 80 is a good, good number to end with.
I'm very encouraged by some of the new medicine that's emerging too. Could change some of the quarantine policies. That's why I'm really glad we're doing it in a six-month window.
Yeah.
And I hope that we'll revisit it as we get close to June, to see if we want to continue for. And so.
What are our numbers in the town currently?
You just sent, you just sent us.
Yeah. Town numbers are very difficult to determine because they track it by postal zip code.
I didn't mean that.
Town employees. There are no active cases I'm aware of, never been reported since 10th of November. We still have one employee out who is recovering.
Do you still have testing kits available?
You have testing kits available, yes.
Any questions?
Are the testing kits here or do the department heads have them? If a public works person says they're not feeling good, do they got to come to town, Paul?
Only because there is a bit of training that goes with it, a bit of record keeping. We have in the police department. Such as somebody's always available through the PD, you know, for overnight shifts or something like that. So they are at the PD and if, you know, I was out sick a couple of days last week and I came in Thursday for some interviews and reminded that our protocol was that I go get tested. So I went with the PD and got tested and that's, that's how, that's how we've been working it.
Please correct me if I'm not following protocol. I'm new to this. So we did mention last time about the possibility of providing vaccinations at the workplace, not mandatory. Not mandatory, just as we would like getting your blood, you know, for the American Red Cross. Is that something that we can look into, that we can talk about at a future date? I don't know what the protocol again is for that being on the agenda.
It is certainly something we can look into.
Or we could just have CVS come and offer it once a month or however often.
Yeah, my, my, my guess is that there would, that would be a difficult thing to accomplish because of our size.
Why is that?
Well, there are minimum numbers. I mean, we have offices of 1,200 and we can't, we can't accommodate the minimums for those retail locations. The health department might be willing to come and set up something just like where the town staff could do it, but then it's open to the town. You know, can we at least just look into it?
Absolutely.
That's all I was asking.
I'm in communication right now with the county health officer on another COVID-related issue and I'll follow up with him on that as well, that, you know, we have facilities, even if it's a public vaccine clinic, we could have a facility that we could open up for that. We have offered in the past and frequently the numbers that they were dealing with were such that we just didn't physically have the space that would accommodate what their need was or what their perceived need was. You know, site access, parking, drive-through, you know, all that kind of stuff. We didn't really have anything that would suit their needs. We may be at a point now where a room where somebody can come in and get a vaccine and sit and then leave. That might work. So I'll send a note off to Tony and.
Is there any possibility of working with the university at all or not? Because I know that they have.
The town staff was able to get vaccinated at the university. I believe that's still open, is it not?
It has changed a little bit and the university's not doing not doing its own testing. They now have a company coming in to do the testing for them. So and and that company was looking for a new location when we were talking about this two, three months ago. I don't know if they're still doing it at the university or not.
We can currently get testing. I mean, we have it, yeah, we have it available for the next, next couple of days, but it may change just because it's break for the students.
Yeah. And like I said, the company is doing it, was looking for a more central location. We weren't sure how long they were going to be set up at the university. The university was running. I can see what they were doing back, the testing clinics and with their for testing. Actually, you guys also ran the J and J.
Yeah, and we did boosters two weeks ago.
Yeah, the last time that Jeff Stein talked to us about it, he mentioned that they still had vaccine and that if anybody.
Okay.
But that was quite some time ago. The problem with the vaccine is that if you don't have enough people, you have to get rid of the vaccine once it's open.
So I guess the question is, do we really think there's not enough outlets for people to get vaccines? Because, I mean, I think I hear what you're saying, but if it's just a small number, I think we should be figuring out a partner. They're doing that.
I mean, you can just show up at CVS and get a shot.
So there's, there's ways that people, if they want to get it, I just don't know that I haven't something here is going to make it.
I think, I think though, the question is appropriate in the sense that we could look into and then we could get information. So partnering information could be another good result that you could do to us. You know, that kind of thing. I think that would be informative so that we kind of, we'll feel like we making sure that people have enough.
Just from personal experience, having it at my. Just from personal experience, having at my employee and where I'm employed made it just so much easier to walk across the street and be able to do it. So I'm just saying, if we're not gonna make it mandatory for our employees here, if we can at least make it as easy as possible. Or at least look into whether we can do it and make it as easy as possible. I think it's worth the effort.
You know, and it would likely end up be, if 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 we can find someone willing to come here to do it, it would be a public vaccine program. Certainly, we'd we'd all have access to it if we needed it.
I'm not saying every month. I'm just saying if we did it one time to see how it worked, that would be a great thing.
Yep.
It was just to confirm if if someone comes and says, hey, I'd like to go to the health department to get a vaccine. I mean, I'm I'm yeah, but I'm just saying, they're not taking their own time for that. And I, I mean, I kind of knew that, but. Just to, if someone wanted to do that, I know. They're definitely, they're doing it, they hit the help.
Yeah. Or if they, you know, they're going down to the, yeah, whatever, if they're going to the pharmacy, whatever, anywhere, uh we would not dock somebody pay or if they're.
I didn't think so.
Or dock and pay more time.
Okay, do I have a motion? Approve the COVID sick leave? Have a second? One second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to reports, town manager.
Okay, just a couple of items. Uh we are through the first round of interviews for a new finance director. So we're making progress on that and we've got five of seven uh slots for interviews for fire chief filled for the balance of this week. Part of next week, hopefully tomorrow we'll get the last two spots filled and we'll be off and running with. Some closures to make sure that people are aware of. As is, has been the tradition at Elon for for quite a while. We are having a holiday gathering of employees. Out at Station eighteen and that'll be uh the day Monday. Our tradition is after that we go home. So a couple of us may be sticking around to do interviews for fire chief, but uh offices will be closed following that. Tuesday, there is a a holiday luncheon for employees in this building. And then the town closures for Christmas are the twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty seventh. And uh the New Year's closure is on Friday, the thirty first this year, because New Year's Day is on Saturday, so. I think that's all I've got.
Okay, moving on to Board of Alderman's update or reports. We'll start with Randy.
Um I, since we decided to do the public works, um the thing the way you're, which I applaud, I think that's gonna be, um I mean, the planning committee. I think that's gonna be really important. Um since some of the committees we're talking about are still not in in uh. Action yet. Um my hope is, is that if there's any other ways public would plug in, I will be willing to do that. So. And I've had my first week of uh being treasured and that was fun. So it was a good experience to kind of start to. Get some training on on what's going on and I'll be going to the training in January for the the good government. I did move it um because of my other things. So so I feel like get really really starting to get my feet wet. Hopefully be as informed as possible.
Definitely get lots of autograph practice.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, yeah, that's a, that's for sure.
Um we were at the, is it Neighborhood Coalition? Am I saying it correctly? That was a great group. I mean, it's so fantastic to not only have students involved. But landlords in the area and then university and then obviously the town of Elon working together to hopefully remedy any situations that come up, whether it's trash or noise. Um everybody really uh heart is in it and for all the right reasons. And so it's it's a great um group to be able to be a part of. And I look forward to working more um to make sure that everything runs smoothly and we all get along. And so it was a good thing. And I will be taking my government class this Thursday and Friday, so have a lot to learn. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Monty.
Uh I don't have any updates. I just wanted to thank the staff for a a great two thousand twenty one. I think we've seen a lot of great things happen. Awesome, good people, but I know we're in the process of filling those roles. And I commend our our police department for the work that they do. They, seeing people be promoted within is always encouraging. And not losing a lot of people is very important right now. So proud of that. Appreciate the work that Pam has done with the planning board and getting ready to take on the uh. The LMO project and twenty twenty two is gonna be a a good start and uh I appreciate the opportunity to work with all the new board members and Quinn and Mark and. Our mayor and um I think it's a good times ahead and. Taxes will obviously be one of the things that we talk about next year about the revenue, you know, as Rich has shared earlier about the census, which still seems kind of a disturbing how our numbers dropped. So I don't know if there's any recourse in that, but that will determine a lot of what we're able to do from a private standpoint, so.
Um I want to thank the staff. Uh I want to thank uh Chief Blackwelder um and and her staff. There was an incident on uh Westwood or Westgate. And we had a car crash this past weekend, I think. Um and 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 all the 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 fire department, all the emergency services. At one point, I was like, man, we have an abundance, but I know we don't. But man, Westgate was a.
I heard the sirens.
Quick to it. Um so I I it was a quick response. The the lady was okay. Um so I just want to commend you on on that good response. Um especially, you know, we had that fire on Westgate. So then it was just showing our, you hate incidents like this happening, but it it does uh help to reaffirm to to neighbors and residents that we do have a quick response team and we we care. I want to uh again, just reiterate that I enjoyed. I don't think I put it on the minutes. Um the uh. Senate Fun Fest, but Kathleen particularly, she did a great job putting that together. Um I really enjoyed um uh having that. Uh one of the things I wanted to ask and talk about, um so we did put that committee, the equity committee together. Um, you know, trying to move forward, I guess, in in January, we could do some promotion of it. Um, you know, I I know we have it on our website for people to sign up for that application. But I think it's brazen of us to think people are just gonna come to our website and say, hey, how can I, you know, we we know the public that doesn't come to us, so we should go to them. Uh so maybe putting in our newsletter or Elon Connect or something of that nature. Um I hope everybody has a happy holiday, Merry Christmas and and a Happy New Year. Um I look forward to seeing everybody on Monday. Um and eating some good food and. You know, fellowship with all you guys.
Yes, okay.
Yes, yeah, but I had I had till Thursday.
I know.
I'm a yes. So I need RSVP on.
Just did.
Hey.
Use your gavel.
Mayor pro Tim Green.
Thank you. I appreciate uh being honored with that designation. With everyone, the new board members and our our old board members and our new mayor. Um just a comment to see and. Ed Peters here tonight brought back some memories for me because um my son back in December of two thousand thirteen was had a had a really, really bad car accident on Orange Drive. And he was there and I remember how compassionate he was and and helping the situation. So kind of brought back memories there. Some of them not so good, but um but I really appreciated him um in what he did for that. So I want to go record since saying that and all the promotions. And I I really like the fact that we're recognizing those folks. So thanks to all the staff, to y'all. Do an awesome job. I know we, you know, can't can't do it without you. So we really appreciate everything you did. Like Quinn, I hope everybody has happy holidays, Merry Christmas and uh looking forward to eating as well. I'm not good at many things, but I am good at that.
So I'm, as Rich mentioned, positivity rate is increasing related to COVID. Um so please, just resident staff, everyone, please be diligent. I know that it has been very easy to get a little casual and lax on mask wearing. But my my ask of everyone is to remember that your mask protects everyone else, does not protect you. So when you wear your mask and wear it properly, it means that you are caring for those in your community. And I think that that's definitely in line with our values here in the town of Elon. So please be diligent. When you're wearing a mask or and please wear a mask. It is really important. Um your vaccine protects you, your mask protects everyone else. So that's the way that you can remember um how that works. Um also, as it relates to COVID, um as you all know, that part of my job is to monitor our COVID situation at work. And some of the things that we are noticing is that um people are writing off minor symptoms because they're vaccinated and they think they're safe. And they think that it's just allergies or the change in weather. So please consider any symptom a potential COVID symptom. Um and just get tested. It's better to get tested and not put everyone else at risk. Um because for those who um can't get vaccinated or haven't gotten vaccinated, it can be very dire for them. So um just doing our part to care for others. Um also in align with the um equity committee. Equality committee, what are we calling it? Equality committee. Um I would also like for us to eventually, maybe in the next, in Q one of twenty twenty two. To get started with a sustainability committee. Um that is something that we agreed to take on, I believe in twenty nineteen. Um at the end of twenty nineteen, no?
Uh yeah, that was before.
Yeah, because it was before you came, right? Um so I I think it it is time to um uphold that commitment to the town. Um that we would take that on and look at what we can do better, how we can do better. Um especially with our limited funds, even more limited now evidently with the census numbers. Um yeah, Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everyone. Um there are some really good decorations if you drive through the neighborhoods, so it's always fun. And of course, Lala Kate loves to see them and I'm sure Addie too, and maybe even Gracie, older kids as well. Um so thanks, everybody, and I think that's it for me. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, meeting adjourned. Okay.